Pulaski Natural Gas proudly supports all Giles County schools, their students, and student athletes. Pulaski Natural Gas is dedicated providing safe, reliable, efficient, clean burning natural gas to their customers throughout Giles County. While natural gas is colorless and odorless, a chemical is added to it that smells like rotten eggs to indicate leaks. Please make sure everyone in your family can recognize the smell of a natural gas leak. If you smell natural gas and would like more information, call Pulaski Natural Gas at 363-1753, and always remember to call 811 before you dig.
M&amp;M Staffing LLC is Giles County's locally-owned staffing agency. Owner John Brayden Harper, Cree Holt, and Mercedes Houston are from Giles County. They know Giles County and they care about this community. M&amp;M Staffing supports local schools, athletes, organizations, and causes. When you're looking for your next career or looking to fill a position, look no further than your locally-owned business, M&amp;M Staffing. Find us on Facebook, 450 Bennett Drive, or fill out an application online at m&amp;mstaffing.net.
Haney Realty and Property Management considers a privilege to help you find the right deal. Hi, this is Daniel Haney. Are you listing, selling, buying, renting, or looking for property management? Let Haney Realty and Property Management create the plan that fits your needs. Our agents bring diverse experience and knowledge of Giles County, Middle Tennessee, and North Alabama. We offer a friendly, professional, and creative approach to your specific needs. Haney Realty and Property Management is your best friend in real estate. Call 347-9150 and find our listings at haneyrealtypm.com.
A healthy body strengthens your mind. Southern Tennessee Regional Health System Pulaski has a few tips to help you stay focused on your health. Here are a few simple things you can do to relieve stress and anxiety. Eat smart. There's no time like now to take on healthy eating habits. Stay active. Physical activity is one of the best ways to improve and maintain good physical and mental health. At STRHS Pulaski, they care about your health and happiness all year long. Visit them at southerntennesseepulaski.com.
Pulaski Citizen Live is doing Giles County sports and community events like they've never been done before. Video of local government meetings and community events, as well as streaming of high school, middle school, and youth league games. Football, basketball, baseball, softball, soccer, and more are all on the PCL schedule throughout the year. Get your game called by the most recognized sports announcers in Giles County. So are you looking for your next meeting, event, or game? Make sure you tune into Pulaski Citizen Live on YouTube and on the Mixler app.
Pulaski Natural Gas proudly supports all Giles County schools, their students, and student athletes. Pulaski Natural Gas is dedicated providing safe, reliable, efficient, clean burning natural gas to their customers throughout Giles County. While natural gas is colorless and odorless, a chemical is added to it that smells like rotten eggs to indicate leaks. Please make sure everyone in your family can recognize the smell of a natural gas leak. If you smell natural gas and would like more information, call Pulaski Natural Gas at 363-1753, and always remember to call 811 before you dig.
I'm Tiffany Haygood, a local Realtor with RE/MAX Southern Real Estate, serving Giles County and the surrounding areas. When you choose a local real estate agent, you're working with someone who's a part of your community. When you choose a local RE/MAX agent, you get the knowledge and experience of a local agent combined with the power of a worldwide real estate network and cutting-edge technology. If you're looking to buy or sell a home or land, I would be honored for the opportunity to work hard for you. Give me a call at 931-703-3952.
Have you considered a career in nursing? Nursing offers many options, specialties, and working environments. Nurses make a real difference in people's lives. Nursing degree programs exist across the country, as well as online. Southern Tennessee Regional Health System Pulaski is seeking highly energetic and positive people who are looking for a career. STRHS Pulaski provides excellent compensation, employee benefits, and growth opportunities. Do you think you've got the right stuff? Contact nursing recruiter Dana Smith at 931-279-8509.
Hi, I'm Hagan Haney, and I wanted to tell you about Haney Realty and Property Management. It's my dad's business, but he has a lot of really nice and smart people who work with him. When people want to sell or buy a house or some land, they call my dad and his friends at Haney Realty and Property Management. It must be a lot of fun because every time I see them, they're smiling. Haney Realty and Property Management is your best friend in real estate. Give them a call at 347-9150.
Hello, we'd like to welcome everybody here. This is May the 4th. We're at the Pulaski Elementary School Gymnasium, the old gymnasium, the one that most of us spent time in. Again, thank you guys for being here. We will start with the roll call. Mr. McAllister.
Here.
Mrs. McLeod.
Here.
Mrs. Gordon.
Here.
Mr. Sumner.
Here.
Mr. Brewer.
Here.
Mrs. Smith.
Here.
And I am here. If you'll please rise another moment. Mr. Sumner, a prayer. Our heads. We ask you for your guidance. We love you, we praise you, we thank you. Amen.
Glad to lead this.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item next to the agenda, the consent agenda, the approval of minutes from the April 11, 2023 board meeting. Have a motion to approve.
Still move.
Second.
Motion been made, and second is in discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Next up, we have recognition of employees. It's Mr. Gilbert here, First National Bank representative. Did we send him to the central office?
I have to email to prove it.
All right. We will hold off on that. If we do get a show, we'll bring it back up. We'll get that recognized, get those teachers in support recognized. So we will move to recognition of Teachers of the Year, the Teacher Leaders. So glad to see all these faces here. We will kick it out.
Okay, at this time, I would like to say a special appreciation for our 2022-2023 Teacher Leaders. This year, we were able to utilize funds from differentiated pay, as well as title and CTE, to grow our program even more. We currently have 53 Teacher Leaders. Each Teacher Leader completes a minimum of 40 hours during the year to help us mentor new teachers, lead professional development, support teachers with high-quality instructional materials implementation, data disaggregation, ACT content and strategy development, ready graduate support, educational technology, social-emotional support, assistance with textbooks and curriculum materials, and the list goes on. We had six Teacher Leader Groups that were each facilitated by one of our district team members. Jake Hammond, Christine Horn, Penny Monks, Alicia Perkins, April Sakowicz, and myself. We want to acknowledge that this is a busy time of year with spring sports, graduations, and other activities, so some of our Teacher Leaders are unable to be here today. At this time, we will introduce our Teacher Leaders. Congratulations to you all, and thanks for everything you have done for us this year.
So I have two Teacher Leader Groups that I oversaw this year. First one was a ready graduate Teacher Leader Group from Giles County High School, Ms. Rebecca Connor. She'll come up and get this, and then we'll ask you to take a picture there.
And then our other ready graduate Teacher Leader is Dr. Melissa McClure from Richland.
And the other group I have is my CTE Teacher Leader Group that oversaw ACT implementation of CTE courses, from Giles County High School, Ms. Russell Kimbrough. And then Beth Johnson from Richland School also worked with Ms. Kimbrough, she's unable to attend tonight.
For educational technology, we have one member, and that's Christy Garrett. Best member of the group.
Good evening. So I had two groups this year. I'll start with my social-emotional Teacher Leaders. So from Elpton Elementary, I have Wendy Hoover. From Pulaski Elementary, Suzy Beck. I think Suzy was unable to attend tonight. From Richland Elementary, Jennifer Hood.
Social-emotional health today, and outside, so apologies.
It's all good. We appreciate it.
From Richland School, Rhonda Woodward.
My next group is the Mentor Teacher Leaders, and I'll start with Ms. Nishi McCollum. From Giles County High School, Mr. John Faulkner.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
From Minor Hill School, Ms. Angie Eddy. Angie was unable to join us. And finally, from Richland School, Mr. Jakes Olson. And Mr. Olson was unable to attend tonight, so let's get to it.
I had the honor this year of working with a data Teacher Leader Group, and these Teacher Leaders were an amazing group. We put in many hours to support all content areas and to make sure that the work that teachers were doing in the classroom was prescriptive to help really encourage student achievement. From Elpton Elementary, I have Amber Case. From Giles County High School, I have Tracy Machello. From Minor Hill School, I have LeAnn Willingham. From Pulaski Elementary School, I have Shannon Shirey. This year, we were able to have two different groups of ELA Teacher Leaders. Our ELA Teacher Leader from Richwood Middle School is Tracy Wallace. From Elpton Elementary School, Mary Beck Barrett. From Giles County High School, Angie Black. From Minor Hill School, Stephanie Morgan. From Pulaski Elementary School, Ally Mae Gibson. From Richland Elementary School, Alicia Davis. From Richland School, Robin Olson. And from Southside Elementary School, Candace Garland. Our next group of ELA Teacher Leaders were our ELA Implementation Leads. From Minor Hill School, Ms. Lisa Carol Rose. From Pulaski Elementary School, Shannon Bratton. From Richland Elementary School, Lauren Carpenter.
Okay, I had the honor of working with three Teacher Leader Groups. The first group that I'm going to recognize are our Curriculum Materials Teacher Leaders, and I will begin with recognizing Ms. Crystal Coleman from Richwood Middle School. Next, we have Ms. Jennifer Willsford from Elpton Elementary School. Next, we have Ms. Perry Corbett from Giles County High School. Next, we have Ms. Rachel James from Minor Hill School, and she was unable to be here Now we have Ms. Tracy Rackley from Pulaski Elementary School. We have Ms. Brooke Carpenter from Richland Elementary School. And we have Ms. E. Locke from Richland School as well. I thought she was unable to be here. And we have Ms. Carol Abernathy from Southside Elementary School. Okay, my second group was the Math Teacher Leaders, and this group, as well as the next group, were instrumental with the math adoption. I appreciate all that they did and the hours that they put in and just working with their teachers at their schools. The first one that I would like to recognize is Ms. Robin Neely from Richwood Middle School. Ms. Angela Mays from Elpton Elementary School. Ms. Jamie Battinfield from Giles County High School. Ms. Libby Rogers from Minor Hill School. Ms. Diane Newton from Pulaski Elementary School. And those that are not here, we will get your certificates to your administrators. Ms. Fankie Johns from Richland Elementary School. Ms. Jennifer Hawkins from Richland School. Ms. Jennifer Gaines from Southside Elementary School. And the next group will be our Math Implementation Teacher Leaders, and the first one will be Ms. Dorothy Gruper from Richwood Middle School. The next one will be Ms. Jerry Porch from Pulaski Elementary School. Ms. Laura Nelson from Richland Elementary School. She's another one that couldn't be with us. Okay, once again, I want to thank all of our Teacher Leaders. Let's give them one more round of applause. We appreciate everything that you do for us. At this time, our administrators will introduce their school-level Teachers of the Year. We will begin with Ms. Heard at Richwood Middle School.
I am so proud of our Teacher of the Year at Richwood Middle School. She shows up and shows out every day. She's dynamic, she puts the kids first, and she brings her son to work most of the day, and helps us out.
Good afternoon. We have two Teacher of the Years for Elkton School. The first one is for the pre-K through 4th grade. This is a kindergarten teacher, and I'm telling you, she definitely deserves it. She earns it every single second of every single day, and that is Ms. Dana Wooliver. And our second Teacher of the Year for Elkton School is in the grades 5 through 8, and again, she's actually a 4th through 8 teacher. We won't leave those 4th graders out, I promise you. But she does an excellent job, and she juggles many hats for us, and that is Ms. Melissa Burgess. Come on up, Ms. Burgess. We also celebrated our Elk Run today, so supporting the team, thank you so much.
I'd like to say congratulations to everyone that's gotten something so far, and I'd like to introduce our Teacher of the Year, Giles County High School, Mr. Chris Belles. Yes, I'd like to congratulate all the winners and recognize today, but we had Teacher of the Year for pre-K through 4 at Minor Hill School, Ms. Stephanie Morgan. And also for our grades 5 through 8 at Minor Hill School, Ms. Shannon Bass.
Okay, Pulaski Elementary's Teacher of the Year this year was one of our very own kindergarten teachers. She's fantastic and definitely a magic worker, Ms. Ally Mae Gibson.
Good evening, everyone. I'm really sure. Good evening, and congratulations to everyone who has been recognized so far. This year, as a first-year administrator, I get the great privilege of introducing and congratulating two wonderful teachers to you all. For grades pre-K through 4 at Richland Elementary School, Ms. Rhonda Young, who is a family And then our 5th through 8th grade teacher is our Special Education Teacher, former preschool teacher, and one and only, Ms. Dustin Rose, who is mom of six and has three And both of these ladies are absolutely wonderful and a joy to work with every day, and I am so proud to get the opportunity to be with them this school year.
I have one of my representatives here tonight. Tammy O. J. Holt is our 9 through 12 representative. She's a special ed teacher, and she is without a doubt one of those anchors in the building that holds things together. You know things will be done right. There's no shortcuts with her. She advocates for her children, and she's one of those you clone if you had the opportunity. So I'm extremely proud of her.
Good evening. At Southside, we have two representatives. We have a pre-K through 4 rep, and that is our 3rd grade teacher, Ms. Caitlin Ware. You've already seen her tonight as a Teacher Leader. And Caitlin, come on up. She's on our social media. And then our grade 5 through 8 representative is Christina Harris. She's our CDC teacher and does a fantastic job in that classroom as well.
and does a fantastic job in that classroom as well.
All right, I want to say congratulations to everyone. A lot of work goes into doing this and a lot of work is represented here tonight. A lot of things have been done through this year. We wind down another one. And it's my honor to present the teacher of the year, system Y for our pre-K through 4, Ms. Caitlin Ware from Southside Elementary. And our 5 through 8 teacher of the year for the system is Ms. Dustin Rose from Richland Elementary. And our secondary teacher of the year from Giles County High School, Mr. Chris Phelps.
We would also like to recognize our principal of the year, Ms. Lori Hurd. At this time, I want to recognize our supervisor of the year, Mrs. Mancy Jones.
Once again, I just want to say thank you to all of our teacher leaders and teachers of the year, principal of the year, supervisor of the year for all you do for the students in Giles County. You're welcome to stay for the meeting or you can leave at this time. Thank you.
Honored and a blessing to have these folks among us representing our system, being leaders on all the different levels. We saw some of them on multiple levels. And while we're at recognition, let's recognize our employee of the month, Mr. Gilbert is here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. It's our honor to be here tonight, but I do have to admit unfortunately in a group of educators that I get an F in reading map. I didn't realize that the meeting was going to be at Pulaski Elementary. So I apologize, but I do have money tonight, so I do have to celebrate with that. So first, we'd like to recognize the classified employee of the month and that's Ms. Kim Adams. Next, elementary employee is Samantha Wallace. And last, but certainly not least, 6 through 12, Ms. Deana Gibson.
Disposition of assets, Mrs. Snyder. We have looked at items that are on in our folder also at the work session. Entertain a motion to approve the disposition of these assets. Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Moving along, school nutrition grants also under Mrs. Snyder. That grant is now available. We talked about it a little bit at the work session, but it's now available. There's $80,000 food line for Bridgeport Middle School. And then another grant for supply chain issues that were incurred over these past years, $102,413.82. What we need to do on this is add it as item G, which our agenda did get updated before the meeting to include that. We'll do that when we go through budget amendments and that way the grants can be accepted and approved at that time. Any questions for that before we move along? Item C, school nutrition bids, again under Mrs. Snyder. The bids were accepted. We had those in our folders at the work session showing bids for beef and then working with Tyson Food and whatnot as we discussed. She accepted the bids and in that nature, but it needs our board of approval at this meeting. Entertain a motion to approve these bids as they've been accepted.
So moved.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Disposition of assets, a list of items from CTE. Mr. Hammond supplied to us. Again, there are some other items in here, but basically those broken, no longer needed for instructional purposes. Again, had this given to us at the work session. Entertain a motion to approve the disposition of these assets.
So moved.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item E, field trip approval. Host international leadership conference. Looks like that is in June 19th or June 25th in Dallas, Texas. It is an overnight field trip. Ms. Laura Kelly will be chaperoning that. Some others who have passed all their background checks, fingerprinting and what is necessary. Since it is an overnight trip, it required board approval. Entertain a motion to approve the field trip.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item F, budget amendments. So we have several items subbed under here. And this is to look at cleaning up our fiscal year '23 budget with discussions, moving monies, things that we had discussed at the work session. And we will do a little bit of discussion with that tonight and put a little bit more pen to paper. The first item on there, which we needed to strike through, the projected cost of three schools renovations. We did in fact make that motion and as a board fully approved that at our April 11th meeting. Kind of hung out on the agenda. We just wanted to make sure that it was done. But we have taken action on that and as we all agreed to move forward with that new cost. So we will move to aye aye there. Paving and asphalt at Pulaski Elementary School, Giles County High School and Southside Elementary School. We're working and hopefully going to be able to piggyback with the city and Wright Paving. In preliminary talks, just don't put no bug in the ear to see if we can do that with the city. If we approve that, we accept going with their bids that they are already in contract with Wright Paving. If we approve that tonight and then the city itself will approve that we can piggyback with them. And then that would be for financial purposes and auditing purposes. Then we can move forward with those expenses. And the approval on those expenses is roughly $186,149 for those three schools and the asphalt that needs to be taken care of there in lay was from repairs amongst other things. So I'm asking tonight for the approval of that expense contingent upon the approval of Pulaski City Council that we piggyback with them. We could do that with county and that has been done in the past, but the county is not in contract with Wright this year and Wright was able to give us some quotes so far to get us here.
So moved.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Love my flamingo water holder right here, by the way. Next item on budget, truck for maintenance. As we've discussed, a new truck is needed on the lean on. Again, specs for that. We do have a state bid that can be honored at $59,489. Seeking approval as this is part of the budget amendment cleanup.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Next item under budget amendments, math and science textbooks. $460,000 is our total for math and looking at another $50,000 that we'll need for science. Science curriculum has been delayed by year on an adoption, but we're in need roughly in the neighborhood of $50,000 to support next year's curriculum and continue with those instructional materials as they are now. So gives a $510,000 total for math, science textbooks curriculum needs. Entertain a motion to approve that expense and as it is note, as it will be part of this budget.
So opposed.
Third, second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Next item, there are four restrooms at Southside Elementary School, approximately $120,000 in expense. As we, if you've been on the board, you know there is that rotation with different bathrooms, different schools as they get those needs, epoxy flooring and other repairs. This will also include, this $120,000 will also include the ability to get to a few of the classrooms at Richland Elementary School that have classrooms with bathrooms and to get some floors taken care of there as well. Entertain a motion to approve $120,000 that will be supporting this budget amendment in the way of restrooms at Southside Elementary and Richland. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Next item, camera upgrades, $35,000 earmarked for Elkton, Giles County High School and Richland Elementary School. Cameras are either non-functional, past their use of life, so on and so forth, but nevertheless items that are instrumental in security awareness for our schools. Entertain a motion to approve that $35,000 earmarked within the budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Next up, light poles at Richland High School football field, estimated $250,000. We still need to bid this out. We do have a good lead. We have old numbers, but with our approval setting this money aside within budget cleanup and whatnot, then we can work towards getting this done and getting that safety issue taken care of there and bring that field up to real high standard as well. Entertain a motion to approve those dollars earmarked within this budget.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Next item, central office servers and switch replacement. Total cost of $73,512. Obviously our system relies on it heavily, especially with testing, what we do visually and online. Again, moving monies around to make this purchase within these budget amendments. Entertain a motion to approve this $73,512 earmarked within the budget amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. So now as we look at the entire budget amendment, which went out earlier today, but it'll be the amendment that starts with highlighted Fund 141. If you'll look on the very last page, you'll see the credit and the debit clears out at $750,000. There are a few dollars built into here just for contingencies and inflation and depending on where we get on this. This was a figure that Beth and Financial Management and Dr. Beer felt was good and a safe number and a number that would help us do these. And we wanted to break those out today with obviously the contingency added to it, the cushion added to it to get these projects done. And hopefully over the summer, if not August, with paving, we'll try our best to look for. So with that in mind, I would entertain a motion to approve these budgets, budget amendments that they have been presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item G, budget amendment, Fund 143, food and nutrition. This is simply the cleanup plus the approval of accepting the grants that were discussed in item B previously, the $80,000 food line assistance and the $102,413.82 assistance. To accept grants, it needs board of approval, along with approval for the budget. Entertain a motion to approve the budget amendment including the acceptance of the grant awards.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. All right. We have no old business sitting on the agenda. Policies for first reading, policy 5.602, staff time schedules. This is a duplicated policy and we, at the work session, we discussed updating use of the current policy concerning overtime and staff schedules. Entertain a motion to approve. Entertain a motion to approve Policy 5.602 on first reading for discussion. Motion.
Second.
Motion's made, and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Policy's approved on first reading, will be added to the agenda for second reading. Policy 5.604, overtime pay of support personnel, this is covered in 5.602. Jennifer White said it was also duplicated and needed to be deleted, and that we'd be best to keep the model policy that we just approved in 5.602. Entertain a motion to delete this policy.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Policy 6.4031, articulosis, which is headlights. Jennifer White again with TSBA reached out to us saying that the current policy needs to be replaced with... They're providing current model policy as we've talked, as we looked at it at the board meeting, at the work session, excuse me. Basically, it does not need to include big bugs under headlights, it's a different way to react or to proceed with that. And we want to put this move forward as an administrative procedure. So it's adopting the model policy and replacing our current, which would remove bad bugs from the policy.
Does it be that easy?
All right, just move it. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Policies for second reading, policy 4.600, grading system. Cliff notes on this, because we've gone through this quite a bit, updated. We updated the policy at lines 26, made it so that shall versus may, removed may, included shall, put emphasis on our uniform grading chart, established a uniform policy, 3.30 within the policy, as well as with the state direction for quality points on the 4.0 scale. Entertain a motion to approve Policy 4.600, second reading, as we have discussed it and amended it.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's made, and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Policy 4.602, class ranking, revised, it's a new policy with honor roll awards and class ranking included. Again, we recognize the uniform grading policy, 3.30, 4.0, or 100 is our highest score attainable for semester average. Included to graduate with state distinction, that was updated to reflect a 4.0 scale that we have observed since 2008. With these changes, the system will be recognizing valedictorian, salutatorian, the top 10, and those graduating with local and state honors as well as state distinction, which could be as upward of 10%, the 10% of the class. It will be more inclusive and notify those state and local honors and distinctions. Entertain a motion to approve Policy 4.602, class ranking on the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made, and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Thank you. That gets us through the thick. Board comments.
I would just like to take a second to, I know many of them have already left too, to congratulate all of the Teachers of the Year and Teacher Leaders that were recognized tonight. Great job. Also, if I'm not mistaken, next week is Teacher Appreciation Week, so I'd like to go ahead and take the opportunity to thank all of our teachers and our administrators for the hard work that you do each and every day for our students and for our students.
I agree, absolutely. It is, it's not an easy job for sure, to do what y'all do every day, and to be able to continue to show up and work for the best futures for our children. Thank you so much from the bottom of my heart. I really, really appreciate that. Also, I do want to say Friday, the 12th, is Fifth Grade Lemonade Day, so you'll see a lot of our little cuties and all over go out and support our little babies and our future entrepreneurs and enjoy their lemonade. I love lemonade. You're up, sister.
I know.
Congratulations to all the teachers. It's funny that I'm seeing everybody this way, because usually everybody's to my back, so... But congratulations to y'all, and Teacher Appreciation Week next week. Thank y'all so much for what y'all do and taking care of our babies. And good luck to both the Richland High School and Johnson County High School, baseball and softball teams are doing very well in regionals or districts, so good luck to them. They're winning right now.
I will say thank you for being here. I know that's a tough choice, you got a senior out there, and so thank you. Get you on the road for this next game, right, at 7 o'clock?
Yeah.
Mrs. Will?
Well, I'd just like to say, although our chairs emptied and a lot have gone, but I still would say congratulations to each and every one of our teachers and staff who were recognized tonight. And for those of you that are still here, my admiration, and it's just for you because you are definitely in a profession that it takes not only the educational part, but the heart. And we say thank you and appreciative of everything that you do, everything.
Congratulations to all the teachers. Again, they certainly deserve it. Next year, it's our next week's Teacher Appreciation Week. It ought to be Teacher Appreciation Week every week. And try to tell each other that you're all deserving. And it takes a special individual to get up and come to school, especially nowadays, because you don't know what to expect sometimes. But being able to see that one kid light come on is worth giving up that day, if it's just one. And I know teachers are looking for that example where one of them, where one of them does that, and it makes a difference in their, making a difference in their life and how they're going to end up. So thank you for all that you do, and it will be standing right there when you, if you need help or whatever. Thank you.
Thank all the teachers and staff, everything they do each and every day for our kids. I got to go to Richland today for Carter, when they come up there, to the activities, and Dr. Jose, everything was on spot today. Thank y'all for what y'all do and in all the other schools. Just keep up the good hard work, thank you.
Keep that sentiment going. I was here for field day yesterday, my last field day, so it was a bitter sweet. It is impressive to me to see the care that the school system here at Pulaski Elementary, and I know all of them in Richland Elementary today too, and all in Elk Run today. But what the adults do and the tone they set and what, you know, to set up a field, to line it off, to get the things for field day, or for the run, or for the color that you guys throw on each, all of it, it's wonderful. And, you know, all it takes is a group of adults who didn't really care too much about it, and then it would just be won. So we recognize that and appreciate it. And I'll just, you know, Mr. Brewer said, "If you need anything, we're here for you." I hope that's what we're gathering out of our board and what this board is made up now, and I hope we can continue this way, and I hope it's... But to see a board that fully represents its teachers, I think, is something exceptional, and we hope you guys feel that way. And I know when, I know when I think about the administration, the teachers, the teacher leaders that we have out there, I really do think we have some top-notch educators here. And with that excites me, I've been just begging Dr. Beard, it's not a leak or whatnot, because we're always just kind of a little bit stand back, but paperwork is coming to the board as soon as Dr. Beard and Financial Management get to meet again next week, hoping that we as a board get to see this preliminary budget with the teacher salaries front and foremost, and more locked in than what we have looked at and budgeted, and hope for obviously approval, and hope that the state through the new TISA funding is able to, you know, fully put a stamp on it. The carrot is dangling in front of our nose a little bit right now, and I think it's because we're a little bit reserved in that, there's still a few questions. But if it all goes to plan, the budgeting that we have worked on, if the state comes through, and the things are looking correct based on what TISA can do for our funding and what we have done budgeting-wise, savings and movings and certain things that are out there, we could be looking at as much of a 14% to 19% pay increase for our certified teachers. So that's kudos to the state, it's kudos to Financial Management, hopefully it'll be kudos to the board as we dissect into it and approve it or improve it on what capacity. But those are big steps and big changes. Obviously, we're following this inflation and this inflammatory market, but something has to be done, and we hope, we hope we can see this happen. Hopefully, we have some much more definitive, like almost the definitive stuff next week. And then obviously, the next Tuesday is our budget work session, and then we're set to approve that budget on the 18th. So work on it some more on the 16th, and then approve it on the 18th. So that work session on the 16th for the budget only, then our regular work session on the 18th, where obviously we'll look at that at the end. We will need to follow that with a special set call session to approve that budget so we can get it to the county commission. Spring retreat, looks like it is hard, not a pencil, but pinned in at May 20th. And with that being the case, we'll meet at Southside Elementary School, 8:30 a.m. to noon. Thought that worked really good last year. And then our regular board meeting will be June 1st, or already in June 1st.
Any additional? Graduation dates?
25th and 26th, Richland and Johnson County. Anything else? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.